On this November eighteenth, to McCormick County Council meeting, we're gonna call this meeting, thank you, and call this meeting to order at this time. We do have our attorney on June and our chairman Hamby won't be here because of a sick child, you know, he in the fortune kill business, he been up for the last fourteen hours, so he won't make it. But this time, we're gonna ask Councilor Moore Brown to do the implication and pray to the religion about Councilor Moore.
Let us pray. This evening, Father, we come thanking you once again for county council meeting, thanking you for those who will come out tonight to share information with us, those who've come tonight to support and to listen, and we ask that thou would bless all of us that are gathered here. In your son's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have our roll call coming from my credit to the council, Ms. Byrne.
Bernie Hamby, Charles Jennings.
Present.
Chuck Cook.
Present.
Jackie Brown.
Present.
David Marr.
Present.
James Upchurch.
Present.
G.P. Callison.
Present virtually.
Thank you. We have approved all these minutes since October twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, and November fifth, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Second.
We're moving second. And then discuss. No discussion, all in favor, nobody right Speaker, let's get, let's get couple, and another commissioner.
Friends and neighbors of McCormick County, it's a privilege to be here again, to the McCormick County Council meeting. Been here quite a few times in the past eight years or so, and I want to thank you for the support that you've given to your local airport. I understand there's gonna be some recognition here in a little bit about some education. That's great. We need to get some aviation education in McCormick County. Let me know, we'll, I'll help you. I want you to thank these people sitting behind this desk right here. It was their leadership that has got what was a postage stamp sized piece of asphalt over here on Airport Road, turned into now, I was out there just a little while ago, a beautiful facility that is gonna accommodate many people for many years to come, and will be a great economic tool for McCormick County. So, thank you for your leadership and your guidance in this. And hey, taxpayers, it didn't cost you a whole lot of money. It didn't cost you a whole lot of money. State of South Carolina, we got you a lot of that money. The reason we got you a lot of that money, because they asked us for it. That's what we're there for. We're there, we were there to get you to where you're at now, and as long as I can have anything to do with it, we're gonna be there to get you wherever it is that your leadership is wanting to take you into the future, for the future generations of the young people of McCormick County. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and may God bless McCormick County. I look forward to the day that they get their little twerks worked out, and Mark calls me and says, okay, we're gonna open the airport up, and he's ready for me to come back down here. Me and one of your representatives flew out and announced on the radio that the McCormick County Airport was officially closed, and I'm waiting on the day that I can come back, and as I fly over the town, I can announce on the radio to everybody in the area, McCormick County Airport is officially open. Thank you again. You know my number. If there's anything I can do to help, please don't hesitate to call.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Cooper, we just kind of constantly want to thank you and your staff and all, what all you have done for McCormick County Airport. It's gonna help McCormick County economically. It's gonna be able to help brand jobs to this area, continue to brand jobs. Again, we just thank you. Chair Brown, PTC area commissioner.
In the absence of Mr. Bernie Hamby, the chair, our vice chair, Mr. Charles Jennings, and all the county council, and all the ones who are here participating. First, let me say thank you for the opportunity to serve as the Piedmont Tech area commissioner. I just recently, on Saturday, received my letter from the governor and from Secretary of State reappointing me. So I appreciate the support of the council, but also our delegates in the state. So thank you. I want to, one of the things I enjoy being a part of Piedmont Tech, but I always want to make sure that council is aware of what's going on. And first, let me say to you, I think several of you usually attend our graduation. We have changed graduation since, you know, the Metford Building is under construction, and that's one of the capital projects that we'll be talking about just briefly. But because they are under renovations, the next graduation that will come up in December, I think it's December the fourth, will be held at the Multicultural Center, Little River Multicultural Center. So if you're planning on coming, we'll still have two graduations, one at eleven, the other one's at three P.M. Just know to come to the Multicultural Center versus going to Metford Center. And if you're coming, if you let us know, they always reserve seats, but they'll reserve parking and seating for you. Just, you know, make sure we let Shannon know, Dr. Rivers, administrative assistant. Now, Crystal, you know I am not technologically, what, okay.
Right here.
Okay, so one of the things I want to share with you, and I asked that they put together a presentation simply, I have some pamphlets to pass out to council, and you really only need one, because there are two of the same thing. So if anyone in the, in the public would like to have one, if we can pass that out too, that would be great. But just to share a little bit about Piedmont Tech to everyone who's here, about our mission and our regional role. One of the biggest things about Piedmont Tech is that we serve six counties. And in addition to serving those six counties, we, our whole role is to equip students with, with the help, the skills and credentials that they need. And basically, we're doing that to help local employers find adequate employees, and it helps also develop the economic growth of the region. What is our mission? Our overall mission for, is of those seven county areas, to make sure that we transform lives, that we basically strengthen the community, and we basically connect those who are educated to the real world, so it gives an opportunity for economic growth. McCormick has been working on a lot of different things, the Piedmont Tech has been working on a lot of different things lately, and one of the biggest one is that McCormick County and Piedmont Tech is trying to work on a manufacturing technology incubator. And what this involves is, under that, the county capital project sales tag, is that we are going to partner, we are partnering, and what we want to do is develop a modern incubator for the county. And what that incubator would do is, is an area, I think we have about three thousand square feet, which will be like a lab that could be shared for businesses that want to come into the county. It could be shared in community involvement for people who want to use that space for community meetings, trainings, information type situations. So we can just basically give people an opportunity to come in and utilize the startups, technology, whatever else that's needed for our county. Part of that is, will be some plan on working on some upgrading stuff with the electrical, the HVAC, the roofing, paint improvement. And so when they prepare those spaces, we will be prepared to have that. And I think that's supposed to come about, hopefully, the end of next year, but we're hoping that come about. So. One of the other things that I want to make sure I say is me and technology will not be making a date anytime soon. What impact that McCormick has over, oh, excuse me, I'm going back to that. That, that project is a five hundred thousand dollar project on behalf of McCormick County Capital Improvement, but through Piedmont Tech, an additional five hundred thousand, which will make it a one million dollar project. So what kind of impact has McCormick, Piedmont Tech had on McCormick County? It demonstrates strong and measurable impacts in McCormick. And, and some of the, the information we have up here is that out of seven hundred, seven thousand nine hundred fifty-two students across all credits and areas, two percent of that comes out of McCormick County. And, and before I leave this evening, I really want to emphasize the importance of, hopefully, the community improving their use of Piedmont Technical College, especially our seniors. And I'll explain to you, well, I'll go ahead and do it while I'm thinking about it, because at my age, y'all forget. Piedmont Tech has a no-cost tuition for at least ninety percent of our student population. But what we don't probably know as much for most people, if you are senior citizen, at least sixty years of age or older, that there's also no-cost tuition. Now, they do ask that all people fill out a FAFSA, because the funding that comes in, it benefits the college. But if you're sixty and older, you are participating in a credential program, then that situation is basically free. So if you're looking at doing something, just learning new skills, technology, just enhancing your mind, this is a great opportunity for you to come back and participate at Piedmont Tech. As you can see, it gives information back there in terms of the amount of credit enrollment hours, the non-credit enrollment hours, dual enrollment, and then how many of the outcome of graduates. We have probably at least fourteen associate degrees coming out of there, and twenty-four certificates. And of the transfer outcomes, we had eleven students transfer seven hundred seventy credits to a four-year college and university, which basically estimated a savings of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred ninety dollars in tuition costs. And I know that to be a great opportunity, because I am one of those parents who saved that money based on my son attending Piedmont Tech as a dual enrollment student. And based on that, hopefully, we'll be graduating in June of this year, What economic impact does Piedmont Tech have for all of the seven areas? So I said six others, so McCormick is a seven, but all of the areas. Piedmont Tech has a total of economic impact of two hundred and forty point eight million dollars in the seven county region. And there was pretty much, this wasn't done by Piedmont Tech, there was a study done by an outside entity that basically showed that, what they were saying is that Piedmont Tech needs to start demonstrating how they're benefiting each county, each community. And so what they did, we, they did a study of what was the economic impact, and that is the amount of money that basically, that it's been bringing to the, the seven county area, and which basically, one of every thirty jobs are supported by Piedmont Tech, based on students who've graduated from that area in our region. And then we also talk about the number of students we've served, eight thousand, seven thousand nine hundred two, we just round off to eight thousand, and that ninety-four percent of our graduates are employed, or they continue their education. The positive with that is that Piedmont Tech has a, basically a guarantee. If you graduate from our college and do not have a job within a certain amount of time, and it's based on you did not get what you need from Piedmont Tech, you come back, and we will redo our, we'll, we'll do, not redo, but we'll do what we need to do to make sure that student is successful. So, because we believe that strongly in, in the services that we provide. And the last thing I think I have is to talk to you about the construction. And we were talking about there are three different major projects that Piedmont Tech is basically working on right now. And that's, we had ground opening for self-regional health care center, and basically, the health care center is gonna span our nursing and our allied health programs, and we're gonna address all regional health care workforce needs. We also have the Family Life and Conference Center. It's a multipurpose space for events, workforce training, and community engagement. And the one that we just had last week was Saluda Center for Manufacturing Excellence, and basically that is to support advanced manufacturing training, dual enrollment, and industry partnership. We right now have about four, fifty million, fifty point forty-eight mil, million dollars of construction for the past phase, for the past year. And so we are thankful that all of this is to make a better academic environment for our students, to give meta-training spaces for the companies that are local, that come in and utilize Piedmont Tech. And basically, what I said together, the results that affirm that Piedmont Tech not only transformed lives through education, but they also sustain economic vitality, which both for personal prosperity, but also for regional growth. And again, we encourage each and every one of you, if you have any concerns, any suggestions, any ideas about how Piedmont Tech can better serve our community, we need to hear. And I, and I really believe, I'm challenging council to get, we need, and I look at these other counties, Lawrence, Megatronics, I look at Greenwood County, which they have all of the, the programs in terms of, the, oh crap, I can't think of the, well, they have auto mechanics, engineering, they have political science, but they have all the programs, but, and we go over to agricultural science in Saluda, but when I look at McCormick, and I think New Bears Veterinary Tech, so we have not capitalized on who we can be, what, what, what would be our niche, what would make McCormick County stand out for just that particular program. So I just encourage council to think about that, and how we can utilize that building to specialize in some format. And that's all I have, unless council have questions for me.
Thank you, Chair.
Again, Ms. Brown, we just thank you and Piedmont Techers for the job they've done and that have enhanced the quality of life for so many citizens here in McCormick County. And I'm proud to say that I am alumni of Piedmont Tech School. I couldn't have fed my family, because if I hadn't went to Piedmont Tech, and they ain't gonna get me a better paying job. So we have done great things here in McCormick County, continue to do.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Having been on the Piedmont Tech Visiting Visitor Center, I've had a very good relationship with the presidents of the, of the college, have some, have had some very good discussions with them, and I think the, what Piedmont Tech has done and can do for the community is, is tremendous. Just, just a couple of questions. With respect to the incubator center, is there a fee for that?
I am not aware about whether there is a fee. I am not aware if there is a fee. I did not check with Russell, who gave me the information. I can check on that for the council, but I'm not aware right now. I'm sure if there's a use of the community building by any entity, there probably would be some, because you still have the upkeep of the maintenance and the utilities and stuff of that nature. And especially if businesses are incubated coming in, it's an opportunity, it's, we're providing extra service for them. We're providing the space, we'll provide administration and stuff to help them out so they can get going. So I'm sure there may be some, but I don't know the exact amount.
If you could, if you could get us a fee schedule, that would be very much appreciated.
I'd like to ask our economic development director, Mark Warner, to just share a little bit about what he's been working on with this center. I know Mark's been heavily involved in this project. So let Mark just tell a little bit about what he knows and what he may be working on.
And if there's something else, other question you had, you could give a couple.
Yeah, I had, I had one more question. You want me to do it now, or you want to, what Mark do we say?
Mark might answer your question.
Okay.
Okay, good evening. Interestingly, had a conversation with Rusty Denning today. He's, he's my partner in crime, if you will, on this, this project. We, we have, besides the five hundred thousand from the penny sales tax, five hundred thousand from the school, we also applied for an additional grant from the Department of Commerce for another four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And we had our interview with the selection team on that this afternoon. And we had a good conversation. You might be aware that the legislature awarded the Department of Commerce eighty million dollars for product development in this last session. The Commerce did something different this time. They, they created an innovation track for grant money, as opposed to traditional industrial manufacturing site development. And Rusty and I looked at that and said, you know, this would be a great project to apply for some of that money. I think we're probably one of only two or three or four applications, so I'm not guaranteeing it, but we'll know by Christmas if we're gonna get a present. So, to your, to your question on the fee, Mr. Cook, what we're anticipating, we have a manufacturing incubator in Abbeville County. They have a lease rate structure that they utilize, and it's basically, I want to say it's a dollar a foot a year for that space, which is well, it's well below the market rate for leasing industrial space. They, tenants pay their utility bills, and they get, also get use of some office space. Rusty and I talked after our call today with Commerce and said, okay, we need to sit down and start fleshing out how this partnership's gonna work. Not only just fees that we, you know, charge the companies for the space, for the startups for the space, but also, how much time do we think they need to graduate? Because the goal is to get them out of the incubator. Three years is a, is a good, good timetable to work toward typically. Then, you know, there's, there's, we've learned a lot on dealing with some of the startups in the Abbeville incubator, and we'll be, you know, taking advantage of that learning as we construct the, the way we, we market, the way we approve projects that come into the space, and, and what we expect of them to graduate.
Good, good.
Yep. Other questions?
The other, the other question that I, that I have for you or Commissioner Brown is, with the growth of data centers in the state, because they're, they're kind of like multiplying from county to county, some of its control, some of it is, is just kind of ad hoc. We find out about a new one every week or so.
Can't find an economic developer that's not saying they're working with one.
I under, I understand. My, my question is, are any of the technical colleges, including Piedmont Tech, developing specific programs for training those people who would be qualified to maintain those data centers? That seems to me to be a very fertile field to go into.
That would be very advantageous, because they're here. We got Meta in, in Aiken, they're, they're all around us. There's, there's a big one in Spartanburg. Charleston's got, I don't know how many on their Google campus now. So yeah, it's a big field.
And they're, and in addition to the compilation, distribution of data, they are resource hogs. So in addition to the, some of the more technical ADP aspects, information technology aspects, there's also water circulation, reuse, they're electrical hogs. So it seems to me there would be lots of opportunities for not only some of the higher technical jobs, but also some of the more utility skilled jobs that would also be required for that, so.
Without a doubt, yep. Absolutely. That'd be a great discussion to have with.
Okay. I understand. Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
And one last, again, thank you. To power, economic state park.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Jennings, council members. I was invited to speak here today by Chairman Hamby to give a little update on what is going on out at Hickory Knob and Baker Creek State Parks, which I manage. As you all know, Hurricane Helene took a swipe through here a little over a year ago, and it did not leave Hickory Knob and Baker Creek untouched, and we're still recovering from it. But we had already started some renovations on our golf course, and those continue. We have, we're undergoing a one point five million dollar golf course renovation that includes tee boxes, which are already, already done, the greens and collars, bunkers, bridges on the back nine to alleviate a flooding problem that we have, and that has grown worse since Hurricane Helene. New irrigation and repairing and replacing drainage that needs to be taken care of as well, and also replacing and repairing some of the cart paths. That's ongoing. The course will actually close, so this is for all of you guys, on May first, to undergo those major renovations to the greens and collars and bunkers. And it will probably remain closed through approximately September So, some, and also ongoing on the golf course is really the last place, not the last place, but where the action is going on now, as far as Helene cleanup around the periphery of the golf course, still cleaning up downed trees and debris from Helene around the golf course. We are also renovating the old tackle shop that used to be by the boat ramp at Hickory Knob into a lakefront cabin. It'll be a two-bedroom, two-bath, handicapped accessible cabin with a deck overlooking the lake. And that is, work on that is ongoing right now. We hope to have it open within about another year's time. As many of you know, the eighteen or nine duplex cabin units that we had at Hickory Knob are there no longer. They had reached their, end of their lifecycle and needed to be torn down. We do hope to replace them in the future, once funding becomes available. We will be turning a few of those sites into luxury campsites. We are, since Hurricane Helene, we also had a major mold outbreak in the four hundred section of motel rooms, that's nineteen hotel room units. That's 19 hotel room units. And that abatement is going on right now and we hope to have those units back open in the next couple of months. We also lost six hotel rooms in the 300 section due to constant flooding issues since Helene and we don't know that we'll be able to recover those six hotel room units. And we're still trying to make decisions on what to do with that space. New doors and a new roof have been put on our barn conference facility. We plan to continue barn renovations with new siding on it next. The water tower, water tower and water system has some critical needs and repairs that are, have been, are being bid out right now. It needs about $80,000 in repairs and to improve the water system at Hickory Knob. We'll also be applying for a flat grant to repave roads and parking lots, including the badly needed campground road and boat ramp access road. They're in just terrible shape. I'm gonna jump over to Baker Creek now. The campground at Baker Creek is currently closed. It just closed this past month. We closed it to replace two bathhouses. We're gonna get two brand-new bathhouses. The ones that are, are there have been there since the 1960s, way, way out of date. And we're also paving the campground roads and the campground loop itself. We were awarded a flat grant for, for that. That's a federal grant and of $600,000. And along with that, we also plan to improve the campsites in there. We did some improvements to the campsites over the last couple of years. We've upgraded the electric to 50 amp and improved the, and replaced all the water lines. The, replacing the roads and the bathhouses in there will make that a really prime, very nice campground. It's nice anyway, but.
Access will be greater.
Pardon?
Access will be greater.
Access will be greater and smoother. The roads are deteriorating from logging. That occurred that the Corps did. And they're doing more logging right now. They're not accessing, the Baker Creek roads are accessing from the backside of, of the park, but they won't create any more damage in the park. And that's basically what we're repairing with some of the roads is damage caused by those logging trucks. Our State Parks Director, we have a new, new director this year and her name is Joy Raintry. She has made the largest budget request for, to support critical infrastructure and utility repairs and revenue generating upgrades in the history of the State Park Service. This is to encompass things that are needed throughout the State Park Service and she has requested $186 million. And while a portion of that will go to Hickory Knob, it won't be nearly enough to cover what Hickory Knob needs. Hickory Knob is an old park. It has old buildings, old roads, old infrastructure. I had the privilege of being part of a major redevelopment at the park where I was prior to Hickory Knob, Charlestown Landing State Historic Site in Charleston. I was there for 17 years and oversaw a $20 million redevelopment of that park. And it's my goal to see a major redevelopment of, of Hickory Knob. It hasn't been funded. We're getting pieces and parts done as we can obtain money. But Hickory Knob needs at least $75 million to do what it needs. And that's where you guys come in. I need all you guys to call your state legislator and tell them Hickory Knob needs a full redevelopment. Okay? So please, don't be bashful. Contact your legislators, same with you guys. Please support Hickory Knob's redevelopment. The, what we have asked for and some may get covered with that 186 million, to replumb and upgrade the campground in, at Hickory Knob to a 50-amp service. To, we are all gonna apply for a grant to pave that campground as well and hopefully we'll get that. We need a major renovation of the lodge units and we estimate that to be at least $75 million. It also needs a new door lock system that'll cost 35 to 50 million dollars, a thousand dollars, excuse me. A, a repaving project through the park itself, a dock replacement, finishing up what the money we have for the golf course doesn't cover on the golf course itself and also some shoreline improvements. Over at Baker Creek, we hope to, while we're getting the campground road repaved, we hope to get all the roads in that park repaved as well as a courtesy dock at the Highway 378 boat ramp, which we had hoped to do a while back and it had been funded. But we could not get a good, good enough price on our bids and it was just way, way over budget. So that, we missed out on that opportunity. And we also hope to construct another ranger residence at Baker Creek. It only has one ranger residence and we really want to break Baker Creek off into its own park again. It used to be an individual park separate from Hickory Knob, but about for the last 15 years, they've been managed together. It's reached a point in its life, lifetime and the amount of business that it gets, it needs its own park manager. And then we also need to replace or stabilize the shoreline around that campground. I've been back at Hickory Knob for about four and a half years and I say back at Hickory Knob. I started my career at Hickory Knob back in 1999. I spent four and a half years then and I, I love Hickory Knob. And I asked to come back to it for this purpose. So I would appreciate your support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Would you coming back? I know nothing gonna get, be better. You would have no doubt kind of council support behind it. And we, we want Hickory Knob to continue to be able to provide lodging out there. Some of them, I know you, their timing for them to, for the demolition of the whole campus. Right, but we, we hope that you'll put some building back.
We, and we plan to.
Yes.
I've actually already had the privilege of meeting, meeting with Chairman Hamby and Mr. Upchurch here and they, they have expressed their interest and support on, on behalf of the county council and I appreciate your words, Vice Chairman Jennings.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just a, just a couple of quick questions. I had the opportunity to talk to the former director of the, the Park Service and at that time it was post-COVID. Labor was a significant problem. I know that hours in the restaurant and other, some of the other amenities have been cut back. How is that situation today? Do you, do you still need labor? And is there anything that the county can do to recruit some people for any of the jobs that you may need?
Yes, we still need applicants for positions. I, I currently have two full-time maintenance positions that are, that are posted. I haven't seen how many applicants we have gotten yet. I don't receive that until the posting closes from our human resource office, but they are entry-level maintenance positions, jacks-of-all-trades basically. I've actually met with Piedmont Technical College representatives to see what programs that they might, could offer to get people trained to be, you know, jacks-of-all-trades, HVAC, ground, groundskeepers, mechanics, electricians and plumbers. We need those all rolled into one, so we need those. And I've spoke to them about recruiting for other positions too. In our restaurant, applicants are impossible to find. Space in, in your new building, possibly culinary and hospitality. We need people trained and who are interested in doing those, those trades and that kind of work. Our restaurant is still closed on Mondays and Tuesdays. Historically, it's been open seven days a week, three meals a day. We're still closed on Mondays and Tuesdays. We're closed on Wednesday and Thursday at the dinner hour. We are open for breakfast and lunch now, but our, you know, our buffet, which we're famous for, is only open Friday, Saturday and Sunday through lunch. So we need, we do need help. We need applicants and we need some skilled workers or those who are willing to be, willing to learn and who are willing to come to work.
With, with respect to food service, any, any effort to, to set up some work-study programs with the McCormick County School District?
I'm actually in a partnership right now partly with Piedmont Technical College, who works with Ori- uh, McCormick County School District to possibly start internships at Hickory Knob for culinary workers.
Just one last question. With everything that's happening at Hickory Knob, the need for repairs, renovations, are there opportunities for any local vendors in, in the county that may be able to do that work?
We're a state property, so anything that is a project that is more than $25,000 has to go out for public bid by law. So, but that is open to public bid. So any, but we do give, there is a local contractor preference given at any of those jobs that are, that are bid out.
Do you have very many that are less than 25,000?
Yes, we frequently have those that are under, under $25,000, between 10 and $25,000. We still have to obtain three bids by law for those projects, anything 10,000 and under. We only have to receive one, one quote and, and we try to award locally. I'm, I'm, I'm born and bred South Carolinian and I try to bid locally, yes.
And, and where are those being advertised?
They're being advertised in the South Carolina Information and Business Opportunities website.
All right, thank you very much.
One last.
Again.
Those smaller projects, I do the calling and collecting bids.
Again, we thank you for your job.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
From Thunder to Ford Nicholson, United Way.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the council. Thank you for allowing me just a few minutes to come down and share a little information about, with you about a very special agency, the United Way. Now I was talking to Vice Chairman Jennings a few weeks ago and I say, you know about United Way? He said, not really. And a lot of people don't. You know, years ago it was called United Way of Greenwood. But you know what? It has changed now. It's United Way of the Lakeland. And that's Greenwood, Abbeville, McCormick and Saluda Counties are all served by the United Way. What is United Way? It's an organization that really helps people. It works a lot with nonprofits. When you think about nonprofits, those are the ones really that work with, most of the time, our most vulnerable population, the ones at the bottom. And the thing about it, they don't have regular funding coming in. They have to generate their funds through fundraising, through grants and whatever needs to help the people. And most of the time, when cuts are made on the federal level, the first people that are cut are ones at the bottom. Just think what happened when the federal government closed down. Who was the favorite? The SNAP people, the ones at the bottom. And when they go get that groceries, you know, it's the same thing. They were cut. And so the United Way, as you see, I left a package for each one of you. There are many agencies that are supported by the United Way and they are making a difference. You know, I deliver meals on wheels, so important. I'm on the board at the Food Bank, work with Boys and Girls Club. All of these are important, working with our senior citizens and our kids. But you know, they don't have the regular funding. We have a great organization now. We have Denise Holland and Donna Hollis. You have the contact information in the background. They'll do the fantastic job. I'm just the chair of the Capitol Campaign for this year and we have a goal of about $800,000. I know it's tough times, but everybody can give a little something. So really what I wanted to do is come down and share with county council. I have some other packages there and let you know that McCormick is included in the services of the United Way. You know, get in touch with Donna or Denise and they'll be willing to come and talk to any organization that have down here because really what we want to do now is get the word out of what United Way is doing. And the second part is, if you know of individuals who might want to contribute, you know, because like I said, they don't have the regular funding, you know, but they are meeting the need. I went over to the United Way building the other day to pick some packages up and if there were not 100 people out there waiting at the soup kitchen. I go down to the Food Bank, the lines are lined up down there and I asked them, they said, right now? They're doing good, you know, and good the SNAP benefits are reinstated and everything. But there's a need and there's a lot of need out there and the United Way is working with these nonprofits to make sure that the needs of people are met. That's what it's all about. You know, it's not good for one move up and the other to go down or remain stagnant. We live in a country where everybody ought to have an opportunity to move up and the only way we're gonna do that is by working together. You know, that's why I wanted to come down and share with McCormick because, you know, I'm a, I'm a firm believer in working together. So the counties right here judge each other. We need to work together to improve the life of all of the citizens in these counties. It's not just competition, Greenwood against McCormick, Greenwood against Abbeville, Greenwood against Saluda, McCormick against Abbeville. What about all of us working together? We in this together and if we all work together, we can improve the quality of life of all of our citizens. So this is what United Way is about. In your package there, you have your contacts and if you want to contact and get further information about a particular program that is operated by United Way, just give them a call. And Denise and Donna, either one be willing to come down and share information to you and tell you about what services they can provide to you because I know there are services in every county that can benefit from United Way. Thank you for just letting me come down and share a few minutes with you and everything and tell you about United Way, how we work together. And by the way, the Food Bank, it used to be Greenwood Food Bank, it's the Food Bank of the Lakeland. The Food Bank is serving McCormick, Abbeville, Greenwood and Saluda also. So it's about teamwork, about working together and everything. And so if there's anything that you're concerned with about United Way, just feel free to give Denise or Donna a call and they will be willing to come down and meet with you, whatever, and explain the programs that are available to you. And by the way, Mr. Upchurch, I heard you are new here from Georgia. Welcome to South Carolina. Welcome to a great county and I know you're gonna enjoy working with this great body here. Any questions?
When is the Capitol Campaign started? How long will it run?
The campaign really, you know, we're doing it now, it really runs from January ne- next year. What we do in those, you know, if there are individuals who want to do, you know, payroll deductions or anything.
That was I was gonna ask.
Of course, you know, you can give out, but deductions won't start until January.
Okay.
So we kick it off like, you know, the last few months of the year so that we can try to have thing in place, you know, the first of January, that's when the deductions really will start. If you want to make, say, individuals want to make quarterly deductions or something, it'll start the first of the year.
But any employer can have that set up in their business?
Yes, yes.
And they just need to make. And they just need to make contact with one of these ladies to get that going?
Right. Really, it's always that Donna Hollis.
Okay.
Contact Donna. Good. Any questions, Councilman?
Yes, Senator, I think the United Way does an excellent job, and I'm just wondering whether or not there may be, since both Donna and Denise are in Greenwood, whether there may be opportunities for a local coordinator in McCormick County? Any thought to naming somebody here?
Yeah, I discussed that with Donna, you know, I said, "On the board, if you're going to expand into those counties, you need to get board representation also to serve on that board, you know, and everything, to have contacts in those counties that you serve, because it's not just a Greenwood thing together. If you're serving all these entities, you have, need to have representation there, and they are looking into that." I'm not on the board, you know, but I did make that recommendation to them.
That's good, because there, I think there are opportunities here, organized opportunities to get additional participation, not only of individual citizens, but also some of our nonprofits and other civic organizations. If we had a coordinator who could make input to the kinds of things that we have, whether it's trunks of gold, Gold Rush, all kinds of activities here, if we had some organization, booths, individuals, or whatever, I think we could, I think we could do very well in terms of increasing collections.
And I agree with your tone, and that's why I discussed that with Denise, because Denise lives in Saluda, Donna lives in Greenwood. And when I told them, I say, "I'm going around to all of the counties and talk to county council, because before you do anything, you got to make contact, and you got to let the people know what you are doing." Because just coming in and say doing this, but if you get local people on board, and they know what it's all about and they're supportive, then they go back and make the contacts in there, because they're the ones that live in the community, they know the contacts they make, and who can be involved to really make a difference in the organization. So, I talked to Donna and Denise, and they are going to work on that, and also talk to the chairman of the board.
I'm sure we could find some volunteers.
Yeah, I tell you what, in the next few weeks, you'll have someone contacting you all about.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just let, I'm glad to hear that United Way don't reach out to the other counties. See, some of us had the opportunity to give to United Way for many, many years, but it all, the fund was staying in Greenwood, because McCormick wasn't a part of the program. But now, because we have a good many citizens now live here in McCormick, but they worked in Greenwood, and that it was automatic that you would give a donation being deducted from your salary every week. And, but now, that money now can come back to McCormick, where it was in the past staying in Greenwood. So, y'all doing much better. So, we tell United Way, McCormick really appreciate what y'all doing up there, considering the old McCormick County. And you say it's in your presentation, by, you know, the bottom, always was the first one to feel the pain. And so, McCormick County do feel the pain, and so, the program can be a great access here in McCormick, because some of the employees can get involved, and some of the employees can take a part in this with the deduction.
Vice Chairman, you're so true, because a lot of the industries used to have to drive, you know, and people would pledge, they would say maybe one day's pay, you know, for the year, and that will be deducted out of their pay. But right then, it was only Greenwood, United Way. The programs being operated was only for Greenwood County, but you had people coming from Saluda, Avenueville, McCormick, everywhere, working at these industries and everything, and they were doing it and supporting the things in Greenwood. So, now, I say, "Hey, we work together, we got support." You got these people coming in, they're giving their money, they should get some benefits from what they give. So, that's why we want to work together, you know, for the betterment of the entire area and every community.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you all, and thank you for bringing us here.
Comments?
Ray Sims. Yes, sir.
I'm a resident of Savannah Lakes Village, and it's like the cop told me once, "You got the right to rain silent, I just didn't have the ability." So, I got a letter from the Water and Sewer Board about a sludge judge notification and a nice bill of $100. And the date of the service was 9/24, which was over seven weeks ago. I just received the notice two days ago. The letter, it's my understanding that we've got Clearwater Solutions running or administering the Water and Sewer Department now. The letter looks like it was written by a high school dropout. It's, they call it, instead of calling it an inspection, they call it sludge judge, which, you know, it's just a totally inappropriate notification, not very professional, doesn't explain the process, doesn't explain the requirement, but it does explain that I owe him $100, and that that $100 will be wrapped into my, into my water bill if I don't make arrangements to pay it separately, which is nice. I've been in Savannah Lakes for 10 years now. This is the first bill and notification that I've received from the Water Department for this type of an inspection. I'm not sure if the Water and Sewer Department did this as a courtesy. It was explained to me that it's part of the Water and Sewer permitting process, it's a state requirement that they do an inspection every five years. I don't know if that hasn't happened every five years, but I've been here 10 years. This is the first bill that I've got. So, I went over to my interceptor tank, and, you know, Savannah Lakes Village is on interceptor tanks, not septic systems, and as I look here, Chuck, I believe, is the only one who's actually on an interceptor tank like the residents of SLVR. There was no notification left at my door that somebody had come and performed this inspection, not that, not that a notification would have actually helped, because I think that $100 is an exorbitant amount of money. So, you know, additionally, the charge for a water meter went from $15 to $17 a couple of years ago, for no apparent reason other than weekend. I didn't do it. So, you know, the bottom line is, they're charging $100. Based on my experience of going out and checking my own tank, it's 15 minutes worth of work. So, when Clearwater, and they said that the county council is the ones who set those fees and limits, so when Clearwater or somebody from the Sewer and Water Department came to the county council to say, "We need $100 to perform these inspections," was there any justification given to the council, or was that just waved through? So, where I come from...
One minute.
Where I come from, you have to have a justification, you have to show cause, and you have to bring some documentation that basically justifies your position that you need $100 per household. And the second thing is, is that, you know, most of the public comments that I've been a part of, it's nothing more than a public comment. So, the question I have is, is there any mechanism, short of going to the Public Service Commission and filing a formal complaint, is there any mechanism within this McCormick County government that allows me to basically file a complaint or dispute these charges as being excessive? The way I look at it is Savannah Lakes Village has about 1,700, 1,800 households. I think it's just a clear opportunity for Clearwater Solutions to gouge the people of Savannah Lakes, because we're the only ones on interceptor tanks, and I don't think it's fair, and I don't think there's any way they can justify that $100 per household every five years.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Bruce Smith.
To continue for Mr. Sims, I also live in Savannah Lakes Village, and I only, I've just got questions that have been presented to me by other residents of Savannah Lakes Village. I think from a personal standpoint, my main concern is, who has given the CWP or whatever they are, permission to walk on private property with no notification? I call that trespassing. I don't want somebody walking on my lot. I guarantee you, you don't want somebody walking on yours without your permission. Most of those, if not all of those interceptor tanks in Savannah Lakes Village are not in uneasement. They're on private property, not the utility easement. Are these people certified to do the inspection? If they are, or if they come, what kind of an ID do they present, or are they scamming us? What do they do for $100? How do we know they did it? If they didn't call us, set up an appointment, how do we know that they even showed up? Who is chosen for the inspection? How do they choose whose interceptor tank they're going to inspect? And why are they inspecting them? And most importantly, who is in charge? So that we can make our complaints to them, I think this is quite, quite frankly, a violation of our rights. I was at a, I went down to the school, to McCormick County Schools this past Saturday. I'm not going to say that, my wife will get mad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wes Newman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm just here as one of the older people here, because I love to be reminded about stuff, and I think most of us do too. So, a little while back, when we had a town hall meeting at the village, we talked about getting together focus groups, people in the village that have a vast background in grant writing. In fact, there's one here tonight that knows about grants, and business development and all this stuff. And I know, Mr. Upchurch, you've got a background there too. And there were big smiles, everybody was saying, "Great idea, let's do it, let's do it," but they're all pointing fingers at you. I suspect your plate is not only overflowing, but you've got the proverbial candle burning at both ends. So, I just wanted to bring up this reminder that there are people out there to help us capture possibly all these vacation, hundreds of thousands of dollars that are flowing through our fingers every year, because we're not doing stuff like fishing tournaments, we're not doing kayaking competitions, we're not partnering with Hickory Knob to give them a combo, right, of come out, "Let's do skeet shooting and stay in a room for X amount of money." You know, there's people out there that want to help us grow McCormick and get it back to its former prosperity that it had, okay? So, that was one thing. The second one is too, is there was an individual here a few months ago, Randy, the man you all know with the nasty brown water filter, was asking for updates on the water, what's going on with our water, every two months. Well, two months has gone by, haven't heard a darn thing. So, it'd be great if we can get updates on that. And also, there was discussions many months ago about getting a phone call and letter campaign going to our state legislators, telling them, "Hey, we got some cruddy water down here. What can you do to help? We got cell phones issues, lousy cellphone." I mean, we just got a ton of stuff. So, when we get that fancy new airport open, these guys can fly in, and let's give them a tour and show them what's going on. So, my whole thing is, again, I know you guys are doing a great job. I was on the website, I was looking at the tax credits you give new business, millage incentives, employee tax, it's fantastic, you've got that all laid out, and it's a really nice job. But we need step two now. How do we get the people in here? How do we get the grant money in here to start to build the stuff back up and get, you know, McCormick really cranking? Because I am really tired of driving to Greenwood to buy stuff. I'm tired of spending money in Linkenton, because I can't get the stuff here in McCormick. So, if we can get rid of these vacant buildings, get businesses back in here, that would be fantastic, and I think a lot of us would really enjoy seeing us prosper again. Thank you all.
Thank you.
There's no one else on the...
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think there were some excellent points that were made here tonight, and I hope that council will find, whether it's at a workshop or in some other method, to discuss those issues and to get some information back out to the public with respect to some of those issues that were raised, because I think, I think, I think we need to do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Barnes, are we collecting contact information for those who have public comments?
No, but I've got most of their contact information. I can get y'all's contact information, and I'll start putting that on the sign-in sheet.
Okay, that'd be great. I'll be reaching out to some of you. I don't want to get into a habit of responding to people, because I don't think that's proper protocol, but I will say, Mr. Newman, if you stay around for comments at the end, I may have some answers to some of your questions. Understood, understood.
I have contacts for all of them.
Okay. Thank you. Now, regarding to this decision, we do have the school here, Dr. Himmel and your staff, we want you to come up front, give yourself as we read this resolution to you. That's good. Then we'll take a picture.
No, that's great.
That's good.
No, that's great. Everybody deserves to be recognized.
Okay. State of South, of South Carolina, the county of McCormick, Resolution 007, Day 25, a resolution recognizing achievements of McCormick County School District. While McCormick County Council noted the essential role that high-performance public school play in strengthening economic vitality, quality of life, and long-term success of McCormick County. McCormick County School District has demonstrated such academic progress, achieving measured gain that paid the district among the most improved in the state of South Carolina. On the South Carolina Ready and Language Arts Assessment, Minister to Student in Grade Three to Eight, the McCormick County School District achieved higher growth in the state, improving by 14%. the state, improving by fourteen percent points since the prior year. And on the South Carolina Ready and Mathematic Assessment, also amended to students in grades three through eight, the district recorded the stud higher growth statewide, improving by five point six percent point over the last year performance. McCormick Middle School earned an extra rating on the South Carolina School Report Card. Marg, marking the first such rating in the school history, representing a historic moment for the district and the community. McCormick Middle School followed the single itself by earning the higher overall score, highest student growth and progress rating among all middle school in the western Piedmont McCormick Middle School ranked sixth in the state of South Carolina for the student growth and progress out of one thousand twenty-eight elementary and middle school statewide, and was the only traditional public middle school in the state to move from a average rating on an extra rating in a single year. These achievements reflect the commitment, work ethic, and dedication of the student, teacher, classroom, district leadership, and staff of McCormick County School District, as well as the support of families and community partner. The McCormick County Council desired to formally recognize and celebrate these accomplishments which serve as a source of pride for the county and the firm of progress and the potential of public education in McCormick County. Now therefore, be it resolved that the McCormick County Council hereby commend the McCormick County School District for its outstanding academic growth and historic achievement, and its demonstrated commitment to providing a high quality education for the children of McCormick County. Be it resolved, approved this eighteenth day of November. Chris Brown, the credit to the council, Jane Upchurch, the administrator, Candy Kim, and Ronald Frost.
Thank you for the job and all the work. Thank you.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope so.
I'm sure I did.
There's not a bad son.
It's all good.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Councilman Cook.
I believe we need to formally pass the resolution, and I so move.
Yes, thank you. The motion is second, all in favor, my right hand. Thank you. Item number two, Order 25-07, in order to create a McCormick County Accommodation Tax Advisor Committee, council put ahead and regarded this third reading.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept this ordinance and pass it on the third reading.
Get a second. Second. The motion is second, any discussion? Discuss it all in favor, everybody right hand. Thank you. Item number three, Order 25-08, in order imposing a local accommodation tax in McCormick County, council put ahead and regard this second reading.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this ordinance for our local accommodation tax for a second reading.
Get a second. Second. The motion is second, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Cook.
I really don't have a, a big problem with respect to raising additional funds for the county, heaven knows we need them. But I would like, I would like to point out for, for the record that this would be a, constitute a three percent increase on top of the seven percent that we are already paying to the state. So the, the total amount of accommodations tax would actually be ten percent. And there's, there are certain designated uses for which those funds can be put so that those funds are not going into the general revenues per se, but they are essentially earmarked for specific things. Now, having said that we could probably use the money, I am, I am a little bit concerned with respect to the overall impact, particularly in a county with limited accommodations, in which we are competing with, with other areas in the, in the state of adding another three percent on top of the seven percent in terms of accommodations taxes that we're, that we are already paying. Whether or not this would have an adverse impact on, on our businesses, I'm not really sure, but I think there are some considerations that we, that we need to make. And in terms of the, in terms of the passage of this, I still have some, some serious questions.
Anyone else? All in favor of the fashion? Everybody right hand. Read on. Item number four, Order 25-09, in Order Amendment Session 2-273, of McCormick County Code of Order, and Section Three, Order 893-05, to revise the limits for pushing and awarding by the county pushing agent, department director, county administrator. The council can now hear and regard this second reading. Get a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Brown.
That we approve second reading for this ordinance? As the last time it was updated was in nineteen eighty-three.
That's right, you do need it, yes. Get a second. Second. The motion is second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman. I think there are some, some virtues to this, this ordinance. I think we do need to provide some opportunities to eliminate so many things coming to council and giving some additional authorities to the, our, our department directors and our county administrator. But I do have a couple of very serious reservations about doing this without proper oversight. There's only one, there's only one paragraph in this, in this ordinance which has any oversight provisions at all, and it says, "This provision," referring to the additional delegated authority, "is subject to the funds for purchasing supplies, materials, equipment, and contractual services being appropriated in the annual budget and available. The county council must approve any line item transfer in the budget necessary to make any purchases." Well, one, we do not have a capital budget. So basically, when we appropriate funds by object class, whether it's equipment, supplies, or whatever, it simply goes into the budgets of those particular departments, and the accumulated funds in some of those departments far exceeds twenty-five thousand dollars or five thousand dollars. So when there's a specific proposal that comes in to spend those funds, particularly when they're close to the limit, there's virtually no oversight at all. They could go for anything. They could go, for example, to allocate twenty-five thousand dollars to the, to Plum Branch without any oversight by council or review of the documentation at all. I'm very, I'm very concerned about the lack of oversight in this, in this ordinance, and I'm also concerned that the method of contracting or purchasing is solely up to county administration. Now, if we're familiar with some of the, the provisions that are in there, and I have, I have these, there are some definitions in our existing regulations, but no specific requirements that say that we have to advertise this, whether or not we do an RFP or a request for proposals, a request for quotations, a request for qualifications. It's left entirely up to the discretion of county administration with respect to how, how those acquisitions are done. And I have, and I have a problem with that. I think council should exercise some control over this. If we had project budgets, so that funds were specifically allocated during the budget process to specific purposes, specific projects, specific allocations, and, and council had approved that in, during the budget process, then I wouldn't, I wouldn't have those, those kinds of objections. But since we don't do that, since we don't have a capital budget, and since we don't put money into the budget specifically for a lot of projects, that essentially county administration has carte blanche, not only with respect to how those funds get spent, but how the procurement is done. And before I can, before I can support this, this ordinance, I think we need some, at least some kind of controls or oversight by council so that we can influence how some of those purchases are made and make sure that they're done, not only in a proper manner, but for those things which council would support.
Thank you. I'm Mr. Upchurch, give us a.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. So as one of the council members said, this ordinance was last passed in nineteen eighty-three, forty-two years ago. And so the reason why I'm bringing this to the council now is because for decades, staff, directors, and the administrator have been breaking the approved ordinance by the council. And so my recommendation to amend or to make changes to the nineteen eighty-three ordinance is because these things have been happening for decades, and as you know, with inflation, prices have dramatically increased. When it comes to the amounts that I've provided to the council, those are the amounts that other counties of similar size have already approved. I am certainly willing to have any oversight and as much oversight as the council desires, but we do have situations, for example, such as EMS where they have to purchase medicine and supplies, and if, they would not be able to purchase medicine and supplies under the current ordinance without going to council every single time that needed to happen. And so my desire, bringing this to council is just to be in compliance. I don't want to break an ordinance willfully, and it's so we can move forward the business of the county. I understand what Mr. Cook is saying, and I'm willing, you know, we can make changes to the proposal if needed, but I will say for decades, the nineteen eighty-three ordinance has been broken, and I just want to be in compliance with the ordinance, and I think that the dollar amounts provided, they match what other counties of similar size have approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Brown.
If I may, when council, when administrators and department heads purchase supplies and stuff, is there not already a procurement policy in place that we use to do that? That's the state's procurement policy, is that what we use?
Yes, ma'am.
No, we're not required to do that.
No, we're not required to do it, but it's in place to use.
Because of our size. We can choose, we can choose essentially any alternative procedure that's not in violation of law, but we are not required to follow the state's procurement regulations.
Mr. Chairman, is that something that we can put on as a policy for expenditures to say, "Now the county will follow the state procurement policies as outlined in the state codes to make this whatever oversight Mr. Cook thinks is needed?" Because the procurement policies for the state are pretty much set, and everybody follows them.
And they following it. It just ain't right, but they been following the part already. And so.
Maybe we can put it in writing then.
Yeah, we can put it in writing. McCormick would have been breaking the law because we didn't change with time. So now we ready to change with time. So move up, but we can always add and take away, and so this.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would have, I would have no, I would have no problem with this if, when we put together our annual budgets, we're a little more specific with respect to those things that are allocated to specific projects or purposes, rather than general object classes, which can include a whole host of acquisition items. And the way, the way we do our budgeting right now means that even if council has the opportunity to review those items that are transferred from one budget item to another, it's virtually meaningless in, in most cases based on the, on the size of those budgets. If we could, if we could make a commitment to more specific budget.
We do our budgetation.
By, by project and by function, we could take care of the problem that Mr. Upchurch has noted with respect to EMS, for example, in designating specific allocations for those medicines that are required, either by law or by regulation, to be maintained in our, in our operations. So, I mean, if we're, if we're more specific in our budgeting, then I don't, I don't have a big problem with this, but until we can, until we make a commitment to at least designate that, then the provisions that we have in this, in this are.
Mr. Upchurch.
Mr. Cook, I know we've spoken private, but I'll say publicly that I'm committed to doing that, and I think you, you know that from the conversations we've had, the, the budget process that has taken place in the past will, will not be the budget process that I move forward with. We will be more transparent and have line items for specific projects and capital expenses as well. What I will add to that is, the ordinance is currently being broken as is. It has been being broken for, like I said, decades. And so I will do the budget process differently, and it's up to the council to decide if they want to pass this ordinance or not, but I will say, it's been broken for a long time. I'm not going to break it because that's not who I am, but I also don't want to send an ambulance to somebody's house and them not have the medicine that they need to treat their patients.
I understand.
Okay. We had a workshop, we'll make some changes starting this year. From now on, you always gonna be making changes because you want to continue to grow, and the laws study change every day. So all in favor, everybody right hand. So all in favor, nobody right hand. Thank you. Item number four, item twenty-five dash zero nine, item amendment session two dash two seven three on McCormick County Code or Order Session Three. That's the one I just read.
You just read that. We're on five.
Five, thank you. I'm getting confused. Item number five, item twenty-five dash ten, and order operating the execution and deliver of amendment and restated Sora Way's serving agreement with the Three Rivers Sora Ways Authority to extend the term there through twenty-fifty, update tonnage commitments, and increase annual tipping fees operating by the start of its revenue bonds in a amount not to exceed thirty million to fund the construction of a new phase and other matter related to. Counsel, this is our second reading.
So moved. So moved.
Can get a second.
Second.
The motion is second. Enter discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Cook.
I I I I strongly support this. Uh, we are in a position in which not to do it would be unthinkable. Um, I still have a continuing concern with respect to this county's liability if anything happens to the uh the Three Rivers Authority. Um, and if 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 they were to go out of business, if for environmental reasons they had to cease operating, um, if they if they got to a point where uh they were no longer any expansion possibilities, what happens to our liability? Because basically, the way the um, uh, this is, this is worded, our our obligations go on forever, for all intents and purposes, regardless, I mean, for the for the full, for the full term of our contract with them, even if they're no longer operating. Um, and so at at some point in time, I hope that we will be able to raise with uh within the legal framework um some escape mechanism in the event of um something happening that none of us can avoid, but also that none of us can afford. Um, the second, the second issue that I would uh that I would raise, and I don't know the applicability of this, we're going to authorize higher tipping fees for the solid waste disposal that comes out of the county. Now, we know that it it applies to our public entities. But my question would be that for those private trash services, um, like Savannah Lakes Village, for example, uses one contractor. I think the town of McCormick uses another. There are other private contractors that are are competing for business in the county. Do those increased tipping fees also apply to those private contractors? Or are they free to dispose of their their solid waste in other facilities? But if 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 they do use um the Three Rivers facility, are they bound by the terms and conditions of this so that not only would our taxpayers be hit with um with higher fees that we would that we would have to pay, our our private contractors would also be hit with with higher fees that they would pass along to their customers?
No. Your private fees, but I understand this. What we're doing just like now. Oh, garbage or trash taking up in McCormick County, go to Tri County. Private don't pay anything by taking McCormick right there. They may picking it up from the resident with Tri County, our side, our Three Rivers don't have no control over that. If they want to increase the cost, they can do that, I'm saying. But they don't pay anymore because you already, the county gonna take care that garbage going to Three Rivers.
Well, Three, Three Rivers, if my understanding.
Oh, and Tri County as well.
Well, Three Rivers, Three Rivers, if my understanding is correct with the way this is written, is going to increase their tipping fees for any waste that is that is taken to.
You're gonna see a two dollar increase.
Three Rivers.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so the the question is, does, is the county going to pay that that two dollars in addition to the private, uh, the private, the private haulers?
The private don't pay. They don't pay any tipping fee.
It it would depend on.
They pay, the resident pay the private person.
I understand, I understand.
And pick it up and take it to Tri County. They don't pay for McCormick County, try. And it'd be transferred from from Tri County down to Three River. Private ain't, you're not paying twice.
So our, so our current, our our private haulers are not paying any tipping fees?
I really take it off McCormick, try. They just pay for, they charging for taking it over to the Street, uh, to Tri County. That what they.
But they're not, but they're not.
They don't pay Tri County.
But they don't, but they don't pay tipping fees?
No.
They don't pay tipping fees to.
They're not in the product, but I don't think they don't pay tipping fee.
I think the tonnage is included for all those private vendors as well and what the county pays.
I would, I would like, I would like to have some clarification on that. I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote and support this, but I would like some specific information on the impact of our private haulers.
Uh, council members and Ms. Clerk, can you unmute our attorney? I believe Mr. GP has some questions and can provide some clarification for the council. GP, you just have to unmute yourself. Uh, I believe he's muted himself. He just would have to unmute himself. He may not have speaking privileges. Regardless, uh, Mr. Callison says that he'll speak with the Three Rivers Bond Council and his council, um, and the other participating councils to get answers to your questions.
Okay, good.
Anyone else not all in favor, second reading? Thank you. Item number six, resolution zero six twenty-five, resolution exception, the dawn fiction facility into County Road Management System as a public road council. Can I get a motion conservative resolution?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Enter discussion. Not all in favor, nobody, go ahead.
Um, just one, um, one question. There's a um, there's a term in there that says we have no obligation to pave the roads in the facility. Since most of those roads are already paved, um, could we say paved or repaved?
Yeah, with the correction, yeah.
Okay.
All in favor with the correction?
I so moved.
Okay. The motion is second with the correction, all in favor, nobody right? Yes. Thank you. Item number seven, council conservative planning, London, what is it? This ain't a, saying to McCormick County Library reprising great but who resigned due to relocation out of the county. Get a motion.
So moved.
The motion is second. Enter discussion. Not all in favor, nobody right hand. Item number eight, council to consider the request of water toy store to extend the temporary grading easement graded to it in connection with the sale and development of county property located on SC Highway twenty-eight, State Park Road. The temporary grading easement is described in paragraph five of the stone water and grading easement executed on July the twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-one, and expires on July the twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-six. Water toy store have request that the temporary grading easement be extended for two years to expire on July the twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-eight so that it can complete, complete the required grading. If the extension is granted, the county administrator is authorized to execute the extension and prepare by the county attorney. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
The motion is second. Enter discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just a, just a quick question, and that is, is there a, since they originally paid a fee to do this, is there a fee for the extension?
Those who are, would work on this easement have not mentioned any fees attached to the extension.
Um, have there been any public complaints or anything about about the extension at all?
There have not.
Anyone else not all in favor, nobody right hand? Item number nine, council to consider authorizing the county administrator to enter into a minimum round agreement with the College of Charleston for the development of strategic plan for McCormick County and authorizing associated spending to a twenty-one thousand dollars. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. The motion is second. Enter discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Cook.
Um, I think this is a a very good move to get us started down the line towards developing a county strategic plan. And I fully support this and hope that the College of Charleston can find it in their schedule to begin this as soon as possible.
I agree. The motion is second. So all in favor, nobody right? Thank you. Councilman, item number ten, council conservative approval of its twenty-twenty-six holiday schedule. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
The motion is second. Enter discussion.
Um, just a question. Uh, Ms. Barnes, are there any changes to this from the holiday schedule from twenty-twenty-five?
No, there's no new holidays added. Maybe just, you'll see maybe uh the day before Christmas Eve instead of the day after Christmas, just because of how it feels.
Same number of days, though, and and essentially same holidays?
It's the same holidays, yes, sir.
All right, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else not in favor, nobody right? Thank you. Down to committee report. Councilman Warren Brown.
Yes, sir. We attended the Upper Savannah Council of Governments meeting, um, Good News Club, and a World Day of Prayer meeting, um, the Chamber of Breakfast, it was at Delahow, county council workshop with CPW, and county council meeting.
All right, thank you. Councilman Cook.
Mr. Chairman, uh, um. I attended probably close to two dozen meetings and and webinars over, so I'm not going to bore everybody with a listing of those. There are some issues that I wanted very briefly discussed, though, that I think some of the issues that came out of those meetings. Uh, first, there was some concern with respect to whether or not the uh, there would be a continuation of USDA rural developments, uh, water, rural water systems appropriations, uh, since the agriculture department's budget has been approved by both the House and the Congress. And um, I don't know whether, I think it's it's already been signed. There there was approximately, I think, one point one billion dollars included in that appropriation. So those USDA funds will be available when we get to the point where we need some some funds, either grants or loans for improving our our water and sewer infrastructures in McCormick County. So I think that was, that was good news.
Yes.
Um, I have prepared a um, an issue paper um in which I tried to list virtually all of the issues that we needed to consider in terms of making some decisions with respect to improving our water quality and pressure. And I hope if there, if this is reviewed, if there are any additional issues that we can, that we can list those so we can make sure that we've got everything considered before we move ahead with substantial expenditures, particularly for planning and implementation. The um, the continuing resolution that that was passed that put everybody back to work restored those SNAP benefits um that we had discussed um earlier in the month. And I'm very grateful for that. But I haven't heard anything at this, at this point in time of whether or not those funds have been have been allocated. Um, so I don't know. I guess we're still waiting on uh, on the state uh, because each state is responsible for distributing those benefits, waiting for the state to to act. There is a problem right now with respect to, or a lot of people are probably aware that WC Tel is going to discontinue their um their email service. And I know that my wife and I have had some personal difficulties with respect to that, that we want to bring to people's attention. And I don't, I'm not sure the best way of getting that out. But if you are signed up with WC Tel and your accounts, if you have accounts with Amazon, if you have accounts with banks, if you have accounts with other um vendors or um commercial sources, when WC Tel goes out of existence, then there's a, there may be a problem with those accounts. And those of you who have them may want to consider starting now to move those accounts to other email sources. Um, because I know that we spent, um, we were, we were migrating ours to a uh, to another uh service provider and away from WC Tel. And um, with one particular vendor, we spent, we had to spend, I don't know how many hours we spent on the uh, the phone trying to to make that happen. But with AI in in place these days, um, when you ask the question and tell them what you want to do, they keep directing you to to weird, weird sources. And so it took us probably two weeks to actually reach a live body that could help us. So if you've got a lot of accounts, um, I think I would, I would suggest you start now in terms of transferring those. Because when it gets down to the wire and WC Tel um goes out of business in terms of their email service, it may be a little late to make all of those arrangements. Um, did have the opportunity to um, with respect to um uh, Chamber Breakfast, to go out and see the new facilities at John Delahow. They have some beautiful facilities out there. They've got a uh, a multimillion dollar grant to set up a a meat processing center that they're going, they're going to process their own meat products, but they will also take beef products from um, from other farmers in the, in the, in the vicinity. but they will also take beef products from, um, uh, from other farmers in the, in the, uh, in the vicinity. That's something we haven't had, and, and will have as soon as they can, uh, get that built. They have a new theater out there that I think, uh, has about two hundred and forty, two hundred and forty-four seats. It is absolutely beautiful, and they want, uh, they want to be able to, uh, offer that to the, uh, to the community for other activities, and I hope, um, we've got organizations that will take advantage of that. Do have a vacancy on the, uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals. It happens to be in my district, so I'll be working, uh, uh, in terms of trying to, uh, to fill that, fill that vacancy. I do have a couple of, um, sad things to report, and that is some people that we knew have passed away during the past month, uh, and Seymour, uh, who a lot of you, uh, knew, who worked and in the real estate field and was also on the town council, has, uh, passed away, um, uh, last month. And Robert Bradley, one of the principals in the Windfall Group, um, passed away, um, it was a, a stroke, and he passed away, uh, last week. So, um, I just wanted to let, uh, let people know that.
Thank you.
I attended the town hall meeting at, uh, Bethlehem Church for Ms. Brown, uh, the South Forestry Association meeting at John Delaware Howl School. I was a judge for the South Carolina Department of Employ, Employee, Employee Workforce in Greenwood for surrounding high schools. Um, that was a, a treat to see what those kids can do. And then I also, uh, I traveled to Ridgeway, South Carolina, and competed in a barbecue competition, uh, put on by the South Carolina Barbecue Association, and spoke with some folks, and we hope to maybe see something like that here.
Yes.
In McCormick soon. So, um, I got some information and some contacts for Mr. Upchurch to look into that. That's all I have.
Good, thank you. We also attend Chamber of Government, we're excited about going back up to the government school again, that the joint meeting with CPW is letting her know we have emergency for a day. They could, they could take care of us when it comes to water. And also that the South Carolina Association of Counties give scholarships every year. So, I mean, they'll give, they'll award the president with scholarship for five thousand dollars. They have a drawing, and they, they pick, and this drawing they'll pick out by eleven county, did it go around to all forty-six county? So this, this drawing, which is, uh, fifty-five thousand dollars, uh, that are the county that we're gonna receive five thousand dollars for some student to receive five, uh, that five thousand dollars is Abbeyville County, Anderson, Cherokee, Carrington, Dorrington, Darchester, Fairfield, Greenville, Greenwood, Jaffa, Barbara, and McCormick County. We'll have a lucky student to be able to receive five thousand dollars coming from the Association of County. This is really coming from the Board of Director Scholarship. They'll be getting, we want some lucky student here in McCormick, where we'll have opportunity. All the students can participate, but it ain't gonna be but just one winner. Still, we just glad that McCormick County is getting a, can receive at least five thousand dollars this year as well. That Upper Savannah Council Government continue to provide quality service here in McCormick County. McCormick County spends over seven thousand dollars a year with them, and get a return by thirty-one dollars for every dollar that we, that this county spend with Upper Savannah Council Government. They continue working with the town, and that, uh, with their street skate trades, and they hoping this is gonna be completed by the end of December. And, um, so we looking for, for some, we've been concerned about when this gonna be completed, but they saying, they looking for it to be completed by the end of this year.
Weather holds up.
So we, okay, true. And, um, and that Green, I mean, Upper Savannah continue provide for the elders, Asian people here in this county. That, um, we thank God that the government is no longer shut down, that we still got problem because of with the delay in SNAP, EBT, for people out laid off from their job without performance. People throughout the United States, and whether the district economy, are still suffering because of that. And that anyone that you see up opportunity that you can give something or donate something, please do so. Cause this time of year, the next week will be Thanksgiving, and that, that, uh, people kinda look for sharing and giving, and that receiving, and, um, let's remember someone that is less fortunate than us, that coming up for next week for Thanksgiving, and then a month from there will be Christmas. And tonight, we thank Asian, everyone you, oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Go ahead. I'm new, I'm new again on this job, okay? Mr. Upchurch.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, now that we've had third reading on creating the ordinance for the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, I just wanna let council members know that there are requirements in order to serve on that committee. If you have anybody who you believe would be a great fit, um, please let me know. I will send you an email later in the week, um, with additional information. However, um, it is required that this committee comprise of one member of the lodging community, two from the hospitality community, one from a cultural organization, and then three others from the hospitality industry. That can be from an attraction, restaurant, um, cultural center, lake or outdoors, or any other tourism agency. The council may also add additional members if they see that that is appropriate. So, again, that's lodging, hospitality, cultural, restaurants, attractions, lake, and outdoor businesses, um, and then any other organization that, um, supports the tourism industry. And it's, it's my plan to have that on the agenda for next month, if we have enough members to serve on that committee. Um, sorry, I got a bunch, cause I'm trying to answer everybody's questions. As Mr. Jennings said, um, we will be having an internal stakeholder meeting with CPW to have foundational emergency and long-term conversations about their ability to provide additional water if that is needed. My plan is to have those conversations with other organizations as well, but this is one first step, uh, that we're going to have with CPW. There were, have, were comments earlier in the meeting, and I get them every day through email, that we have a lot of potential in McCormick County to bring visitors to our community at the lake, the airport, at, at, uh, Dorn and other places, and so I think the Accommodations Advisory Committee is a good place for that. Um, but part of my plan for next year, and the budget is going to be to restructure the Parks and Rec Department. I know I'm like eight months ahead of myself, um, but to add tourism to that. We, if we're going to invest time and resources into trying to bring people to McCormick County, there has to be somebody who's managing it, cause I definitely don't have the time, and I know our council members don't either. And so this person, um, it would be a restructure from a current vacancy that we have, so it wouldn't be a new position. But that person would help manage all the great ideas that the community has, and figure out who the correct partners are, whether that's, um, a nonprofit of the commu, in the community, or the town, or us. Um, but somebody has to collect all that information, administer it, and then try to help with, um, finding funds as well. Um, so there's a lot that goes into it, um, and that's in addition to the accommodations tax. For me personally, it's been four, almost five months now since I've been here, um, and you asked, you know, we had the town hall, I think it was the first or second week I was here. Um, and so for me, the first thing is that we have the right staff in place. I think everyone who is here now, um, believes in McCormick County, wants McCormick County to succeed, and is willing to do whatever is necessary to see that happen. We have a couple more vacancies that we have to fill, um, and then it's working with the council to formulate a plan. You heard earlier in this meeting that, um, we've invested funds to create a strategic plan, and so once we have a plan on how to move forward, um, it'll be a lot easier to have those discussions on exactly what should take place next. I know Mr. Cook will echo this, that in the strategic plan and any other plans we create, the community will be heavily involved in that process. So Mr. Cook and I helped, um, make some adjustments to the proposal by the College of Charleston to make sure that we have proper community input, and that they're along with us, um, in that process all the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ch, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Cook.
Um, with respect to the, um, Accommodations Committee, luckily and thankfully, we're not under the same kind of restrictions with the recommendations from this committee that we are with the Capital Project Sales Tax Commission. Um, and so we don't have a, an up and down vote, but I think it would not be too early, based on the restrictions with respect to how that money can be spent, if we begin to identify, if council and administration begin to identify those particular projects, um, or activities that may be most productive in terms of bringing additional tourism, bringing additional accommodations, bringing additional housing, or whatever that might be, to McCormick County. Uh, rather than just have a, uh, a committee come in blind, uh, and come up with some things, maybe we can have some suggestions for them, um, that would, um, uh, kind of spark their interest, and, um, they could, they could bring that, they could bring those, they could bring those back to council.
I agree, and as you know, this is an advisory committee, so they'll present some ideas to council, and then council will determine to fund them or fund their own ideas. What most counties do, and I'm not calling them out, but I kind of am, they take the lazy approach. They tell this advisory committee that they have X number of dollars, and normally what happens is that advisory committee allocates a certain number of dollars to different nonprofits in the community. Occasionally, the county will have a side project that they want to fund, uh, but most of the time, they, they say, all right, here's the money, you decide where it's divvied up, and then they provide that recommendation to the council. And so, um, we can definitely do that. Um, I think that it's important that, um, we are very intentional about the people who serve on this committee. It is going to be a significant amount of money, tens of thousands, possibly hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, and I think that that is going to help us significantly with tourism in our community. There hasn't been an intentional effort in this community to drive tourism that I'm aware of. And so I think by having all these stakeholders involved, to have new ideas, and then to actually write them down and get council's approval, I think that's going to go a long way in bringing people to McCormick County.
I'm, I'm, uh, I'm personally particularly interested in, um, the availability of some funds for housing projects in the county, uh, whether it's partial funding, uh, or renovations, or whatever it may be, because I think housing is one of the things that, that are on the list that we can spend that money on, and it is also one of the biggest needs in terms of developing new housing in the, uh, in the county, particularly with respect to retaining and attracting, residents for moderate income housing. I mean, I think that's, I think that's critical.
And this is cause we got all the things here now, that people want to become home on us, one for them, that habitat. So the great access, that's right. Listen, we'd like to thank Asian, everyone for coming. We'd like to wish Asian, everyone your happiest Thanksgiving. At time, motion to a joint.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. All in favor, nobody right here? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, GP, you have a good night.
How's it going?
Ain't no joke here.
Okay.
We need some, too.
Oh, okay.
I got, I got nice place on my ribs.
Okay, well, we'll just do that from now on.
Yes, uh, let me see. I'm gonna get it to cook for Cora.
Um,
We could, you, yeah, we couldn't, well, at the start, we could, but, um, Okay, course it gonna get, yes, yeah, she, okay, yeah, and we grab it.
Yeah, he was telling you to turn it back on. You thought you had turned it off. He was trying to get me to turn it back on. I don't know.
Man, I think that would be great.
You know, I really think that's, if I make it on time, that's what I'm gonna do with myself.
Okay.
What, what do you, what do you prefer, St. Louis, Kansas City barbecue?
I'm good, I'm good. I ain't either. I do like Kansas City, that's.
Yeah, I do, too.
I, I sure do.
I mean, I- Well, I knew, I knew there were problems out there, but I didn't know it was the fire department that did that, because, because they, they, they blamed somebody bringing in a, a houseboat. Cause I knew they had, I knew they had a lot-